Okay, call this meeting to order. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adequate notice of this meeting is advertised in the Adbury Park Press and the Beacon on Thursday, March 31st, 2022, and by posting the notice at the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters? Mrs. McAvoy?
Here.
Mrs. Downing? Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
And Mr. Polino?
Present, thank you. Okay, this time, Dr. Ferreira. How's that?
I'm still getting used to that.
I know. Me too, it's first time.
All right, thank you, Board President Polino. So, I am going to turn it right over to our Assistant Business Administrator Sharon Sylvia, who is going to discuss the 2022-2023 Budget Workshop, and you have a presentation for us, yes?
Yes.
Do you recommend we slide over to...
We don't necessarily have to.
No?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, welcome to the 2022-2023 Budget Workshop. Our goals tonight are a quick review of the tentative budget presentation that Mr. DeGeorge did last month, as well as we'll speak about what's new in revenue, what's new in appropriations, and then our next steps in the budget process. The tentative budget that we talked about last month. So, the district sustains the largest one-year loss in state aid this year, or for the next budget year, of $3.2 million. So to resolve this loss, we talked about some prepayments that we're going to do in the current budget. We're going to pay down a few leases that are due next year in this year's budget. We have some contracts that we can pay this year instead of next year. Then we spoke about the cuts to some teachers, some programs, supplies, things like that. And then we also spoke about some appropriations that we're able to move into the grants. When you compare this year's budget to next year's budget, we've got a decrease in the operating budget of almost $3.7 million, which is about 5%. The grant budget is decreasing about $8.6 million, which is 83%, and the debt service budget is decreasing 77,000, or 2%. Revenue. So as Mr. DeGeorge talked about also last month, we had a reduction in our tax levy due to Chapter 44. They were reducing our levy by about $438,000. We did file an appeal, the appeal was approved, so we did get that money back. So now our base for the tax levy is back to what it was. So our increase in the tax levy would be $1,019,321, or 2%, which is the legal max that we're allowed to increase the tax levy. The total increase to the levy, which would be the operating and debt service together, is 1.74%. So that translates now into 1.382, which is less than two tax pennies, which will be about $66.30 per year for the average household. Now we want to talk about some sustainable sources of revenue. So, as part of strategic planning, the district is always trying to explore alternate sources of revenue. So one thing that we're trying to do is to bring in some gen ed students that we can charge tuition for, so they would consider it added district students. That's one source. We would like the community to consider reopening the Ed Foundation, or possibly an Alumni Foundation. Those funds in the past have come to the district, have been great sources of revenue. And another thing we just wanted to note was, there's been discussions about having a grant writer for the district. We did have that in the budget originally, but when we have this $3.2 million loss, we cut that from the budget. So now we'll talk about appropriations. So Chapter 44. Actually, before we talk about that, we want to just mention to everybody that what was presented in the tentative budget, there'll be a lot of changes to that before the final budget. We're still looking again at those alternate revenue sources, we're reviewing the cuts and the moves to see if there's anything that, you know, would be better for the district and for the kids. So, you know, there will be changes. Now, Chapter 44 not only had an impact on our tax levy, but it's also had an impact on the district as far as contributions from our employees for health benefits. When they enacted this law, what it did was it reduced the contributions the employees paid to the district for their health benefits. This has hurt the district a lot. They thought that the decrease in the premiums would help, but it really hasn't helped the district. Now, in regards to health benefits, something the district does yearly is we do remarket for insurance, health benefits specifically, and we've had a hard time because of claims loss to get out of the state health benefit plan, so we haven't been able to find a more cost-effective plan for the district. And then on the same token, property and casualty insurance, we do the same thing. We do remarketing every year to try to get the best insurance coverages at the best price. And then another thing that we want to bring to your attention is cyber insurance. So everybody has heard about cyber crimes in the media. That's a big problem now, which is affecting the insurance coverage for cybersecurity. We were, it was recommended to us that we increase our cybersecurity insurance coverage by 100% for next year. That is just going to continue to rise as the cybercrime issues continue. Now, special education, that's a very important part of the district's budget, very important thing for the district, so we want to have Mr. Baum come up and just talk about a few of the changes that have happened in the special education budget.
Okay, thank you. Really, the special education budget is pretty straightforward. The majority of it is driven by student need and IEP. The two major pieces of it are added district tuition, pretty much the same as last year, very similar. Last year, we ended the school year with 24 students that are at a district. Right now, we have 25. We did bring some students in, and we also sent some students out over the course of the year, so that's always a fluid number. The other major piece of the budget is related services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, behavioral services, nursing services. That number has increased a decent amount over the past year from last year. In the local budget, it's up over probably $250,000 for related services, and again, that's all driven by IEP need. Also anticipating that we don't get our IDEA allocations for another month or two, but contributing more to related services through the IDEA grant to alleviate the burden on the local budget as well. Nursing services last year increased for students that require one-to-one nurses. That stayed the same going into next year as well, but that's a significant number there as well. Other than that, the only other piece is our instructional supplies for our special education programs, which is pretty much similar to last year's number as well.
All right, so now we'll talk about our next steps. So, April 29th, we'll publicize the advertised budget. May 5th, we'll have the public hearing for the final budget. Again, will be different than what was presented last month. May 7th, we will have the deadline for posting our user-friendly budget to the website, and the 14th, we will submit our final budget. And that's it. Dr. Ferreira, that's all I have. So I will come back and we can start public comment.
Thank you.
Dr. Ferreira, anything else? You have nothing else? Thank you. Okay, this time, we're going to have some public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment, where his or her hand, when called upon, state their name, address, affiliation, intention to make a statement, comments addressed to the Board President, comments were made on one issue at a time, comments are limited to five minutes. Audience member said, "Be recognized twice till all have wished to comment." This portion of the meeting is for public comments only, there will be no question answers. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our public business, everyone entitled to a public comment. If there's a question for the board, there's an established chain of command. Anybody wishing to speak? Armato, Mrs. DeCenza.
Regina DeCenza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I did hear Ms. Sylvia say that there was hope for revival of an education foundation, but the Lacey Education Foundation was legally put out of business, so to speak. It no longer exists and cannot be revised, revived. It would have to be started under a completely new entity. I gave it some thought, but unfortunately, I cannot find enough parents to help and contribute with such an endeavor, and believe me, I have asked a lot of people. If you folks can find someone, I have a lot of data and information from when I started the other 501(c)(3). And the other thing is, thanks for this meeting, but I'm very sorry to hear that the state, you know, double caught us. That was a major fastball that they threw when they cut us by 3 million. No one ever expected that or saw it coming. So, you know, I'm really sorry about all the cuts that have to go through, but, you know, you can't just print your own money in the printing shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Bidnick?
Richard Bidnick, Forkett River. Several things I want to mention. First, at the last meeting, when Patrick was doing his presentation, as a taxpayer, and I'm speaking now for the taxpayers of the town, okay? The county only originally would allow you, because of the Chapter 44, whatever, a 1.2% increase, but you went ahead and appealed that, which actually is hurting the taxpayers by taking the 2%, okay? My issue with all of this, and this has been an issue that I've talked about over and over again, is that we keep throwing more money into education, but we're not getting a better education. And the test scores have proved that last December. You publicly presented them. So my feeling is, why, when everybody in this town is suffering because of high inflation and other costs, how can you justify, really, any increases, quite frankly? And you know, when you people talk about the state cuts, the state cuts are very logical. I know about the enrollment decline that's been going on to school districts, it's a lot. And the state isn't going to continue to keep giving Lacey Township more money because, you know, it feels it deserves more money. And I think, I'm actually kind of glad, because the state is now forcing the school district to do what I've been talking about for years, and I said was conventionally going to happen, if you go back and look at the tapes from several years ago, when I spoke at different budget meetings, is that there was going to be a huge crisis, because there's never been any planning for when this eventually was going to happen, the party's over. But now you want the taxpayers to continue to have to, you know, do the increase. My feeling is, I've looked at the state health benefits program, I did a lot of research on this, there's a lot of other health plans which are cheaper, which we could offer the educators, and if they want to pay more for a more expensive plan, then they can pay for it. I also want to know, as a taxpayer, why I'm paying for a family plan? I mean, if you go in the corporate world today and you have a job, the corporations make you pay for your spouse and your family. Why am I, as a taxpayer? Why are all the taxpayers having to pay this? I mean, this is where budget negotiations, which have gone on, you know, since I've been involved with this over 10 years ago, I brought this up over and over again, but nobody's doing anything about it. And I mean, now we have more problems. So, you know, you're dealing with the teachers' union right now, and really, quite frankly, I've been reading comments online from articles on Lacey Patch about the budget cuts, and the public doesn't support any increases. What I'm seeing is the same thing that I've been saying, no increases without performance evaluations showing some sort of performance that's at a higher level. I mean, you negotiated these contracts, we're suffering. The taxpayers are suffering, the students are suffering. This board and previous boards negotiated these contracts, and I want accountability. And the taxpayers want accountability. And I'm going to read to you just a few of the comments, because it's not, you know, it's not only me, there's a lot of people right now who feel, you know, that we're being screwed. So let me read to you what they have to say. Okay. "Lacey has operated an unfair and inefficient education for our students for years. The teachers' union runs the administration and the Board of Education, which Mrs. Downing, Mr. Peters, Mr. Scanlon, Mr. McAvoy, Mr. Zalinski, and Mrs. Clark are either current or former members of the New Jersey Association, Teachers Association. The taxpayers without kids in school do not stand a chance at fairness unless measured standards of teachers and students' performance is tracked and pay is based on those standards. If our current teachers say that they are underpaid, they can resign and seek employment where lots of money is being thrown away, like Newark, Camden, and other Abbott districts. Have fun traveling the parkway every day and walking to your cars. Save the educational classes and get rid of extracurriculars. Stop the extra stipends paid for locker room sitting, as an example of absolute waste. Just my opinion, that's one person." Another person's comments were this, and this was from a retired teacher. Totally agree. Retired people are subject to these increases year after year, spending years supporting an increased budget and no actual results showing increase in student performance. Also, families struggling will also struggle to pay these increases. When I was of school age, it was not uncommon to have 40-plus in a class, I remember that. In college, there would be hundreds or so in lecture hall classes. We need less administrative costs and less aides. I state this as a retired teacher." Okay, so then there was another comment that was made, and this was, "Well, these cuts should have happened a long time ago. The enrollment in the schools has declined from 5,100 to 37,500. I don't know any establishment that can justify year-over-year increasing taxes without making significant cuts. If there's almost a 24% decrease in enrollment," which is what I was saying, "it doesn't take a rocket scientist to understand that you can't justify to the taxpayers tax increase with such a decline in enrollment." Those are just a few of the examples of, there's nobody supporting any tax increases. And as a taxpayer, and somebody who has been involved with this for a long time, it's time for this board to get their act together, and what I mean is, you're going to have to make really tough decisions, and you're going to have to be tough with the teachers' union, because we want give-backs from that union. And that sixth-period stipend needs to go, because obviously, we've had so many, such a reduction in the student body that we don't need it any longer. So it's time to do some really serious soul-searching, and, you know, before you start asking the taxpayers to actually pay more money, you better show that you're worth that money. And that is the point that I'm making. And this is just going to be a continual problem. I'm sure that this coming election that will happen in November, that there's going to be people who are running, who are going to be very angry about the decisions that this board continues to make, and not seem to even care how the public feels. And I'm sorry to be somewhat annoyed or angry about this, but I've been at this for a long time, and this is exactly what I predicted would happen, and no one is listening. So please, now, you're negotiating a contract, negotiate performance evaluations attached to student achievement. We want the kids to get the best education, and we only want people who are performing at the highest level. That's going to benefit all the kids in this town. I would think that you would all agree about that, and I would think that the teachers' union would also agree about that. They say it's all about the kids, well, let's make it all about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bidnick. Anyone else? Okay, seeing any more comments, we're going to open this up to board comments. So we'll start with Mr. Armato.
Okay, at this point, can I ask some questions from what I heard on the budget?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, we'll throw your comments in, plus your questions. Go ahead.
Well, great job. It was a little odd for me not seeing Mr. George talking about the budget, but great job, Ms. Sylvia, well done.
Thank you.
When I hear things like nursing's going up, and in my opinion, shouldn't that nursing expenditure go down, being that we're not doing all the testing and all the stuff that we were doing in the past with regards to COVID? So aren't we looking for ways to reduce that cost when it comes to nursing? The one-on-one requirement's not there as much as it was in the past couple of years. So there's an opportunity there for nursing costs to go down. I do like the idea of us trying to bring more students to Lacey, but has there been any conversation regarding to making Lacey more attractive for students to want to come to? So, you know, what makes Lacey attractive? Has there been any talk about rebranding? Has there been any talk about maybe making the mascot look more appealing? Anything to make a kid from another town say, "Wow, you know, I'd like to go to Lacey." I mean, we do live in Pine Barrens, we do live close to the water, so could there be some focus on maybe agriculture and, what's that word I'm looking for when it comes to the ocean? Help me out here with, you know, some science in regards to studying the ocean and everything in...
Environmental.
Thank you, environmental, I was getting there.
Ocean.
So that would make a student who maybe wants to go to Del Valle, right, to learn how to do a field, and if we focus on that here, they might say, "You know what, I want to go to Lacey for that," because they focus on that there. Or if we have someone that wants to, there's the word I'm looking for, marine biology, then they'll focus on coming to Lacey because we're focused on marine biology. I'm sorry, I'm going on and on.
At this point, we are trying to bring in an ROTC program...
I hear, that's a good one.
...to attract people from different towns, which would bring in revenue to us, so...
But everybody has that.
No, no.
Well, everybody tries to have that. I think we have to separate ourselves from all the other schools, and we're not doing that. And there's an opportunity for us to do that, rebranding, making our colors a little bit more vibrant, maybe a brighter shade of silver or gray, or anything that makes it look like, when I go to Barnigan, I always go, "Wow." Just the orange and black always makes me go, "Wow, it's so shiny." And here, it's crimson, navy, and gray. It could be brighter, it could look better. And when we live in a great area, where we're surrounded by people who are very much involved in agriculture here, and we have people who are very much involved in marine biology, why don't we make that the focus of who we are as a school? So someone who lives in Manahawk, and might say, "Wow, Lacey focuses on agriculture, Lacey focuses on marine biology. Mom, Dad, can I go to Lacey?" And maybe then, we kind of slowly but surely bring that delta back to the plus side, as opposed to incremental loss year-over-year. Has there been any thought about that?
Well, you know, Mr. Armato, and you have to think of the other part of this too, because other programs have been thought about, like a business academy type of thing, and that was, you know, Mr. Brandis and other administrators were talking about bringing this new academy in. But with every new idea, you have to come up with curriculum, you have to pay people to write this curriculum, you have to hire teachers for the teaching of the curriculum. So all these new programs that you would like to bring in to make the pop wow factor needs to be supported somehow, and that's a problem. Even like the ROTC program, that needs to be supported. So administration, during curriculum and finance, they come up with these ideas, but in order to facilitate them, we need the funding, and that's what we don't have right now. So this academy that we're looking to start, I don't think will get off the ground this upcoming year unless something miraculous happens.
Well, and I wanted to add a few things too. Mrs. McAvoy just spoke about the ROTC, we just had that meeting last week, and one of the things that we showed Lieutenant Colonel Allen is a public service video about, public service announcement, for lack of a better word, about what sets Lacey Township High School, because it's a high school program. So what sets Lacey Township High School apart from others? And it's a 12-minute video, very well done. But one of the things that comes to mind that sets us apart is our Ocean County College Academy. There is no other high school right now that is providing students the opportunity to graduate with that associate's degree while at the same time earning a high school diploma. The other thing is our Leadership and Humanities Program is another program that sets us apart. So we're working on that video. I mean, the video as it stands right now is really good, it's a little long, and I think that, and I know Mrs. Claus and I have had this conversation, that when you have a 12-minute video, it's too much to watch, right? We need to give them snippets. We show the 12-minute video to Lieutenant Colonel Allen because we wanted to highlight all of our programs. As far as branding goes, there is a section on our website that's dedicated just to branding, and this is where, a few years back, some board members will remember, we settled on what our paw would officially look like, what our lion head would officially look like, what our seal would officially look like. Can we brighten the colors? Perhaps, but our colors are our colors.
No, I know.
So you bring up some good points, and, you know, we're going to continue to work on that video, but not just a video of the high school, a video of the entire district, because there are a lot of great things going on in our district despite what a lot of people say.
In the short time that I've been on the board, and I'm sorry if I'm overstepping my time limit, but...
No, no, not at all, that's why we're doing this.
I've had great conversations with Mr. George and everybody here on the board. We've done some great things that I only found out about because I'm on the board now, and I don't think we publicized that enough. I think I learned about the one thing we did with the special ed program and teaching them how to live on their own. That's something that we should be celebrating, and I know the special ed people and that group of people, they worked very hard to get something like this. And this is something that we shouldn't let people know that we have. We're doing so many great things in this school that no one knows about because we're not getting it out there.
Well, and you...
I'll give you an example, I'm sorry to cut you off. Christine Cooper, this weekend, did a phenomenal job of getting a volleyball program, a volleyball tournament going about on Saturday. I only found out about it because it was on Facebook, because if you look at our front of our high school, it said we have a fishing flea market going on and not a volleyball tournament. It was wonderfully run, it was seamlessly run, it looked like a professional organization, like we've been doing this for years. It was beautiful. And that's something that I think if we want enrollment to increase, that's something we need to celebrate, that's something that we need to get out there to the public, because a kid from Stafford who might, I mean, a southern regional who plays volleyball might say, "Wow, I would love to be a part of that." And it's the difference between when a kid says, "You know what?" I'll give you an example, a kid may be saying, "I want to go to Donovan because I don't like what's going on in Lacey." Could that be because they don't really know what's going on in Lacey? We're not celebrating that, we're not getting that out there to our seventh and eighth graders. When you come to the high school, here's what you got to look forward to. I don't know, it could be getting done, but I have two children that graduated from here, and I've never had that conversation with them about, "Here's what this high school offers. I got to dive into it, they got to dive into it to find out what the school offers." We all know we have a great football program, but think about all the other great things that I've learned that we have, that I bet you half the public doesn't know about, and that's something we should celebrate.
And that's one of the reasons why we're doing the Listening and Learning Forums. One of them happened to be last night. Sadly, you know, we gave our entire school community and beyond the opportunity to tell us three things, you know, what are we doing well, what are we not doing well, and what questions do you have? You know, that has been out for nearly a month, and we gave, we're giving the community an opportunity to come tell us these things, and we had six people show up.
Yeah, I believe it.
You know, and that saddens us, because we spent a lot of time, you know, getting that ready, and this is, you know, we've been listening. The public has been saying, "They come to board meetings, they ask questions, we don't answer questions." So we're doing these forums, we're going to do it again, and I've asked the six people who showed up last night to help us get the word out. You know, it was on Facebook, we tweeted, it was on our website, you know, we sent out emails, but now we just have to have people come to the table and sit down with us and talk to us about, "What are we doing well? What are we not doing well? What can we improve on?" What are we not doing well? What can we improve on?
I like that.
So, we're going to do it again, but we just have to encourage participation. We're going to work on that.
Thanks for your time.
Yep.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Armando?
Oh, no, thank you.
Any budget questions that you wanted to ask now or are you okay?
I'm good. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go down the other end, Mr. Skinner.
Sure, go ahead. I just want to remind everybody, last year when I came up with the idea of having this session, we had it in the library. And one of the things we did is we had it in a U shape so that the board members could see each other for a change. Mr. Armando is talking down there and I have to keep rolling back and forth to try and see if I could see him. But, you know, and the idea tonight is to have an open forum. So, you don't, no time limit is what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the heads up.
I just want you to, you know, and kind of same for the public. The idea here is if you have some ideas about what can be done or what you think should be done with the budget, that we can actually do. We do all know that we all want to pay less taxes. And the other thing too, as was just discussed now, maybe the tax burden would feel less onerous if you knew all of the things that were going on, if we communicated that better. But I just wanted to remind everybody that this is, the idea of this is an open forum so that everybody gets input, has an opportunity to make their statements and not feel constricted. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll go down the far end, Ms. Claus.
Okay, so, yeah, we did talk about this last year, the, just actually talking about, you know, generating some revenue. So, what we do well is OCC Academy. We know that. And athletics, we do well. So, is there a way we can actually make a commitment this year to put something on paper and say, this is, these are the things that we're going to try to do to bring in revenue instead of talking about it? I feel like it's been a year since we talked about even the Alumni Foundation. But, you know, those, that's what we do well. So, that's what we're going to bring in right off the bat. So, like, how many kids do we have now that we have from out of town? How many kids do we have?
Tuition-based?
Tuition-based, four. Four. And we're losing how many? Graduation?
In the tuition base?
Of the four.
Of the four?
I think we're...
One, at least is a senior.
Yeah. Just one?
At least one. It might be two, but I think it's one.
Okay.
And one of them just came.
Do we have two leaving? So, I think last year we approved, I think it was for about $2,000, a person to put the word out of our things that we do well. Do you remember that? We've...
Publicity.
Publicity, yes. Did that ever happen?
We never got the person to do it, no.
Oh, okay.
And unfortunately, it got cut out of the budget for next year too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we need to be able to advertise. That's the only way we're going to bring people in of what we do well. So, how are we going to do that if it's not in the budget? So, how do we get that back in the budget? I would like that back in. If we're going to commit to tuition students, tuition-based students, what we have, OCC program, you know, whatever, we need to be able to tell people outside of our town. So, Facebook isn't going to cut it because that's just our town. So, we need to get commercials going and things like that. It's going to cost money, but it's the only way to bring people in. And then I was wondering if anybody would be interested in doing an evening OCC Academy for students that don't go to Lacey? Even if it's just a couple of classes offered. We do make money off the OCC Academy, correct?
We do.
Per class? So, let's just say someone from Donovan wants to take an English, English one and two first semester. Even though they take English at the high school, these are college credits. I know they don't have anything like...
You mean opening it to students, right, outside of Lacey?
Opening it to students outside of Lacey, yeah. So, we can start bringing in other kids. And then maybe they're going to say, oh, well, let me just pay the $7,000 and go to the Academy. And maybe we can set up something where if they're from out of town and they want to do the OCC Academy, we give them a discount because they're already paying for the OCC Academy. Just another way to bring people in. But I think at some point, we need to commit to what we're going to do to bring in revenue. I know we want to do the Alumni Foundation, but what, who's going to run that? Like, how are we going to advertise that? We can't just open it up and say, okay, donate. Well, what are they donating to? So, we need to like have a plan of our goal. Do we need a roof? Do we need, you know, what are we donating to? The grant writer, what are we doing there? No? Yes? No? It's not in the budget?
It's not in the budget, right.
Not in the budget, so can we do the volunteer grant writer?
We're going to have to revisit that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe as a board, we can just come up with three solid ideas?
I'm sorry, I thought you were currently looking at that volunteer.
Well, we had the discussion.
We did last year.
Right, and then we talked about the actual grant writer, but then it got cut out of the budget. So, now we're going to have to revisit it.
Right.
But it would be a good way to bring in other students from out of district if we offered something at our school. That's why I think the OCC Night Academy would work. Even if it was small, let's start bringing in kids from Barnegat, Toms River. I mean, we do it well, so that's something we should really put out there.
That's a great idea. I think that's a great idea because some of these kids are working right after school. And if they can get a class in towards an O.C.C. degree at nighttime, I think it would be huge. And that builds, that builds community. That builds pride. And things are getting done. And one of the things that Kim and I spoke about last week was I was really concerned about that 60, that's...
The safety net?
The safety net. And we talked about how can we get that number up with kids taking SATs? Yes, we understand that some of them come from broken homes. Yes, we understand that some of them are underprivileged kids. We understand all that. But there's a lot of great stories out there in the world about underprivileged kids and broken home kids who've done great things in this world. And because, the reason why they were able to do that is because they came from a good school program that emphasized, you can do it. No matter, we have the program for you. And I think Kim is bringing a great point out here in emphasizing, hey, you work after school, no problem. We still have this program for you at night. Even if you can't do it during the day at school, we have it for you at night. And it's... I grew up in a world where I never wanted to leave my school because they had so much to offer. And I think that's what we need to promote here, that this school has so much to offer. And it keeps our kids safe. It starts to build camaraderie. It starts to build community. It starts to build something that they really take pride in. And they do already have pride in it, but just think how much that pride would grow if they knew what was offered to everyone. And I'm sorry, that's a great idea, Kim, by the way.
Mrs. Claus, you're talking about our OCC program during the day.
So, keep it during the day, obviously, but then start a new program at night. Even if it's small, just bring in, we need to start getting the word out, advertising. You know, I think it'll bring in full-time students. But if we come up with something creative, discount, you know, for our tuition, things like that, if they want to come full-time when they're out of district, you know, I love a good sale. So, I would say, hmm, you know, 3,000 versus seven and my kid will graduate with associates? I would do that.
Kim, you're talking about, I think Mr. Armando thinks you're saying that we should have OCC at night. We offer it during the day. You're talking about having a program to discuss it with.
She's talking about having a program to bring parents to hear about our program, not offer it at night.
No, no, offer it at night.
Offer it at night. Offer the classes.
Offer different, more classes at night, you're saying.
Right, even if it's the same that we offer during the day, but if we offer something at night, we could bring in students from out of district and then make a profit. Because we do make money on OCC.
Did we have that program, I mean, years ago when I was on the board? We had a night program or...
That's what our kids did.
Yes.
And what happened to that program years ago?
Our kids did that at night.
Community Ed?
Yeah, the community ed classes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think that's what Kim's...
No, no, I know she's saying.
Either way, as long as we can bring in some revenue. If we can tie it to OCC Academy, it would be a great advertisement, I think, for what we have. And then we can start, you know...
I definitely think it's worth a deeper discussion, a whiteboard session, whatever. But it's definitely something that, again, if we want to promote who we are, we want to increase enrollment, there is one good way. Now, a kid says, wow, a kid from Barnegat says, I took OCC classes at Lacey. I might as well stay here.
Good, we can add it to curriculum for a discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so, all right. The AP exams, I think we're going to put 20,000 we have budgeted for, for the kids to take the exams. Are we doing that?
There's 20,000 and then there was another 10,000, Mr. DeGeorge. Why was there 30,000 for AP exams for next year in the budget?
Do we know?
So, we, so next year, we talked about in curriculum, we're going to revert back to our normal AP policy. We pay for the first exam and then the students get reimbursed for the exam upon getting a three. That's current policy. This is the only year that we're paying for all of the exams. That's the usual money that's in that account.
I thought we don't pay for exams ever unless they get a three or better or get an A in the class.
No, they get one from us, no matter what their score. And then they get a three or better on all the rest. They'll get reimbursed if they pass the exam.
So, okay, so...
That's the normal policy that existed for several years now.
So, why would we pay for all exams this year? Like, just why would we do that?
Because we're encouraging all students to take the exams. So, what we discovered last year, we had so many students taking the class and then not sitting for the exam. So, the encouragement this year is to make sure that all students who really want to take the exam, that money would not be a factor for them to do so. Because they may have already exhausted their first exam over time. So, and briefly, it's worked. We've pushed our numbers way back up for students who've signed up for the exams from a low mark of last year of 170-some odd. We're well over 250 now who have signed up and want to take it because we are going to absorb that cost for this year.
Mrs. Claus...
But next year, we revert back. So, that money you see there is normal money.
I have the same question as you. And I'm going to bring that up in curriculum because there's 30,000 budgeted for AP exams for next year. So, I have the same concern.
But I actually believe that that's a general testing account. I think there's money in there for SATs, PSATs. I think you might be looking at it a little bit wrong. It might be, that might be a general testing account.
I discussed it with Mr. DeGeorge.
Yeah, I thought AP was 20. I think it's all AP, but we'll take a look at it.
We'll take a look at it because I had the same question.
So, I don't know if I agree with paying for all the tests. Because I guess, looking at our passing rate, we're at 45% last year, 62% last year.
62% the year before.
The year before.
Correct.
61% the year before.
Correct.
So, knowing that our passing rate most likely will be less this year because of the block scheduling coming out of COVID, I would rather put that money into the program instead of just paying for a test. So, let's just say there's 10,000 that we, you know, have extra in this 20,000. Instead of paying for everybody, take 10,000, put it back into the program. Figure out why we only have 45% passing. Do they need more labs? You know, what can we do with that money to put back into the program?
Makes total sense to me.
Does it make sense to anybody else? I just think paying for a test, knowing that we're not going to even be at 50% passing is just kind of a waste of money when we can take that money and put it back into the AP classes.
So, we're talking about next year's money, not the current money, right? Because you already, Mrs. Lintner, you already talked about the fact that we're in this semester block. So, we have students who took the AP class in the fall. They're going to take the AP exam in the spring. Are you talking about current monies or are you talking about next year?
I'm talking about this year and next year. Because if we're, if we're not even at 70 or 80%, and we know we're not going to be there this year because of block.
Which is why we're moving back to the AP.
Right.
Right.
So, why would we just take that money just so they can all take the test? If they feel they're going to get a three or better, they should take the test. If they get a three or better, we're going to reimburse them. So, I would rather take that money and put it back into the program.
And make them pay for the exam?
Like normal, like we have been in the past. Everyone pays. You get a three or better, you get your money back. That's how we've been doing it, correct? For the past three or four years? Right, but take the money that we would have spent for everybody to take the test and put it back into the program. Figure out what we need to get our numbers up to 70, 80% passing.
Correct.
We're not there. We're not close.
Well, this year's money's already been budgeted for that, so... But remember too, you have a couple of misnomers going on. So, and I don't know the answer. I don't know what the general passing rate is for the AP exams. Our high watermark, you're looking at them right in front of you. Our high watermark was the year before COVID where we saw over 60% of our students getting a three or better. That's very good. Yeah, I taught AP for 10 years. The best passing rates I ever got was 60, 65%. And I got awards for it in the Home Run Yard. So, I don't know the exact numbers of what passing rates are. If we're pointing to one bad year, that's an outlier. So, last year, we had a low number of students taking the test. We had remote and AB learning and we had a low watermark of passing. So, you're making assumptions that we're going to see a low passing. And we could see a low passing rate this year. But we're trying to provide these students with every opportunity to gain that experience. Because remember, the philosophy of AP is twofold. The philosophy of AP is that it makes your school look good. But there's a philosophy of AP that these kids are getting exposed to college-level material, even if they're not in the OCC Academy. So, we opened up AP classes to freshmen four years ago to huge success. 60 students as freshmen taking AP World History, getting that exposure. Getting, which I know you've talked about, getting themselves on a track that's college-level material and college-level tracks. Very successful. And as a matter of fact, last year, we saw a lot of success and a lot of kids getting a three or above in the World History AP. Some other ones did worse. They actually did very well. With Mrs. Wareham was the instructor. He's not the instructor this year, but he will be again next year possibly. So, there's a couple of misnomers you have going on. So, in curriculum, we decided that we wanted to take all of those impingements away from the students to get out and take those exams. And it's worked. We went from 170 students. We have over 250 students who want to take it for one year only. And then we're reverting back to the normal policy next year. So, that was the idea of curriculum. That's where we...
But this is for next year, this money?
No, there is money next year budgeted, but the intention is not to pay for everybody's AP exam. Go back to normal policy.
So, you're saying this spring is just one time? But that was for last year's budget. We're talking about next year's budget.
No, we're only talking about 21, 22. There's money is budgeted for next year, but that's back to normal policy. They get one free and then they get it back if they get a three or above. That's normal policy going back to next year. This year's a one-shot. We're trying to get everybody, see how we do. Are we going to have low results? Are we going to do better? We kind of identified some problems last year. We're going to go back into what we call our stretch program where students are going to come and review because they had first semester block and they haven't had their classes since the end of January. So, we're going to do the best that we can to get up to that level. And we pushed more classes into second semester, so the students are sitting with those instructors now.
No, that...
And hopefully, they'll do better. And next year, we're reverting back to an AB block. So, we should see another change again because we felt that that was one of the reasons that might have been holding them back a little bit. So, we're doing a lot of different things, but we're not intending to pay for everybody's AP next year.
So, with our ranking down this year, do we know if our AP affects our ranking?
AP is almost central to the ranking.
It is.
Everything that happens AP is central to the ranking, which also begs the question, what is Lacey Township School District doing otherwise? Because you're not always stressing AP and some districts do. They really do stress AP. Okay, however, we do offer a lot of AP. We offer almost 20 classes of AP. We encourage all of our students to take AP and expose them to that. So, if you want just scores, we're doing it the wrong way. Because we're putting a lot of kids in AP classes.
Yeah, but we can't keep being at the bottom just so we can expose people. I mean, we need to be able to say, we're at this level. I mean, we can't, I mean, that's a family decision.
But one of the criteria is how many AP classes are being offered. It's not just about schools.
Well, offered is different than passing.
But it's part of the criteria.
45% passing is not a good number. So, we need to get our ranking up, maybe figure out what classes, you know, we're not scoring well in. Maybe eliminate those classes.
So, also keep in mind that prior to COVID, 2020 was the last SAT where I have all the high schools of SAT. We were better than middle of all the high schools in Ocean County, high watermark. We certainly hit a low watermark. All right, you got a lot of reasons for that. AP was also a demonstration of that. So, you have that, you do have a poor ranking, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, excuse me. Twenty-twenty was certainly a high watermark of SAT and a high watermark you have right in front of you of AP exams. Sixty percent three and above, that's excellent by anybody's standards. We outranked Toms River South. We outranked Toms River North. We outranked, uh, Manchester, all of those schools. We didn't outrank Point Beach. We down, did not rank Point Borough, those things. We certainly had a high watermark. You're looking at a very low watermark. We understand that. Okay? We're gonna continue and we talked about it. We talked about it with, um, and, and, and the points that have been made here, we are certainly at a low watermark. We're at a low watermark where we had low amount of students coming to school. We had a low amount of AB students that were able to come in front of their instructors. And we're really identifying, we talked about it last night, some of the players are here, that we talked about it, that students who stayed home, either homeschooled or stayed home and did all remote have done very poorly coming back to school. Okay? We see that. We have the results of that. So, we've just gotta hope for better times and hope for more consistency in front of, and it came up last night, all those good instructors. And that's, that's the hope.
I just don't think we need to draw attention to it by having everybody take the exam.
All right, can I, can I jump in for a second? So, we're talking more curriculum here than we are budget at this point. So, if I could reel that in.
Kim and I do this all the time. So, it's like, sorry, are we the only two here?
If I, if I could just, if I could just reel that in.
I don't wanna pay for all the exams. That's just my vote.
So, okay. So, with, you know, and, and Mrs. Claus, you have some very valid points. So, I, I think, you know, pen to paper, address it with the curriculum committee. We could discuss this more at a, at a, uh-
I'm just talking about the finance part now.
Well, that's fine.
In terms of budget, the budget that we're talking about-
And that's fine, but you kinda, I think your train ran off the track and was heading down curriculum way. So, we wanna bring it back and, and whatever.
It always does.
Mrs. DeLuca, you have a question?
It is with regard to that. And I hear both of you. And my only, I guess, little tidbit would be with, Mrs. Claus is saying, I believe that the bottom line is we're gonna suck no matter what this year, right? Bottom line. So, why put the money to it? Why not gear up for next year and put the money towards that?
Correct. And I, and I, and I think you're-
Make it out of this, don't even do that. Don't pay for the test this year because it doesn't make sense to pay for them. I get it that we wanna pump up our kids because, believe me, I'm all about my kids. It's all about their education and I want Lacy to be the best for them. But that is one way that we're gonna suck. We're coming out of COVID. Everything sucks right now. So, put the money aside for now and gear up for next year and make it even better. One more point, you had said something about regard to the, uh, listening and learning and I think that that's huge. Um, is everybody allowed there, like all of the community or is it just school-based parents and whatnot?
Anybody.
It's open to anybody.
Okay, I'm just curious about that.
So, if, and thank you for your, your comments. So, um, just to understand that whatever money was budgeted twenty-one, twenty-two year, that money at the end of June thirtieth at midnight, that money's gone and put away and we can't use it next year. So, that can't even be used for something else next year. That's two years down the road. So-
It'd be twenty-twenty, okay.
Right? So, we can't, we can't take, you know, let's just say we had thirty thousand dollars left. That money, we can't use it next year. It can't go into next year's budget. So, um-
But I do feel you guys need to advertise more. You guys have to, I own company and like the biggest thing of us is time just goes by and we stay stagnant and we stay stagnant. We talk about stuff, we don't do it and then nothing changes. And then, boom, another year has passed. So, whatever you guys get out to get more information of people like us parents, I'm telling you, it is the best. Because I do feel, sitting here in so many meetings and we've said this, and I was the big defender of let's, we need answers from you guys. The biggest thing is we don't feel like we are a part of your community. We feel like there's a table there and I, I believe that the you would be beneficial for all of us because I feel like you guys are the, the, the sole keepers of everything and then we have to pit, pinpoint everything and fix it and, and try to figure it out. And if we were just more of a community as a whole, you would have so many parents with you and honestly, you, that would've been filled for the Listen and Learning. And these meetings too. I just, I, I really feel, we have something great here. We're just not expanding on it at all.
So, we hope that the next Listen and Learning will be packed.
I hope so too. It's just part of the whole.
So, I, I'm sorry. I know as a parent, if I had to spend more money because my, my children's education was getting better, I'd be okay with that. If the school board laid out a plan on how they're gonna improve the education, not only just for my child, but for the entire district, I'd be okay with that. That's something, there's an old saying, right? In order to make money, you gotta spend money. Well, in order to improve education, we gotta spend money.
But then you'd have the taxpayers like Mr. Bidnick who would not agree with that and he's-
I think Mr. Bidnick wants a better education for his money.
No, I know he's for education, but not for raising taxes. He's not-
I think Mr. Bidnick is looking for proof in the pudding.
Yeah, I think if our outcomes were a little bit better, higher, I'm big on the ranking thing. If that was higher, we can say, listen, this is what we're doing. This is why we're spending money. Um, but I just feel like that this is gonna put us in a deeper hole and if, if numbers matter, you know, the outcomes do matter. So, um, that's where I stand.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are you done, Ms. Claus, with your stuff?
No, no, hold on. Might have one more. Give me.
Sure, go ahead. Why not?
First of all, um, I, I am really shocked. I know that some of the folks that I'm close with were at the meeting last night, but I'm really shocked, quite frankly, that only six people came. That is appalling. In fact, I didn't even apply for it because I figured it was all gonna be just parents and to hear that only six-
You're more than welcome to come.
Only six people came is really sad. But on top of that-
Well, we were expecting twenty-five.
Well, it would've been nice if there were a hundred and fifty. I mean, that to me would've been somewhat even acceptable. That's very sad.
Absolutely not.
But on top of that, there's a public relations issue that has been created by sport, unfortunately. Things that have happened over the last year and the perception of the public is not very positive. Okay?
But we could change it.
We could change it. And the issue too is that people came to meetings, they spoke their minds, they did not feel like they were being heard. We all know this is a fact. And that's why a lot of people maybe didn't come to that meeting last night because they're just thinking, it's just again, we're just gonna be there. We're gonna say, they're gonna listen. No one's gonna do anything about it. I have to say, the one thing that we did see something happen is when the parents finally started complaining about the food service, which I happened to know about for several years. And I actually spoke to Mr. De George about this in a private meeting a few years ago, about the directors no longer here. But the issue is until the parents actually came and were complaining meeting after meeting, then finally, something was done about that. And I'm glad it was done, okay? Because I know people who work at food service. I knew what was going on there for the last several years and it's been bad. So, I'm glad you did that. That's a good thing. But, um, the other thing I want to mention is what is the priority? Okay? We, you guys have a, now, a budget crunch, okay? What is the number one priority of this school district? For me, it's about education. The extracurricular stuff is not really that important to me. I know that some of you up there, that's a large part of it is. But as someone who really appreciates an excellent education, it was a product of getting an excellent public education, I am all in favor, if we have to, to put the money into the kids' education and not just AP, everybody's education. Because a lot of kids are not gonna be at that level. So, before you finalize this budget, I want you to look at what is actually really important. What is this? Is this a school? Is this a sports program? This is what, what is our priority? Because now we have a budget problem and we have to make a decision about what is the ultimate priority. I'm hoping and praying that it's education because that's what it's all about. These kids, once they get out of here, they need a, they need a solid education of a lot of different things that they're not getting for a crunch right now, but the world that they live in and culture, art, music, history, economics, mathematics, science, they need to have those basics. That is what is really important to me, that the kids get this. I hope that you guys strive to do this. You gotta make cuts. Don't make the cuts in education. Make it in the sports end. And I know there are people up there that sports are really important, but you know what? We have to make a decision now, guys.
All right, Mr. Bidnick, thank you for, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Just one more thing. Um, are outside services like, um, therapies, P T O T and speech, um, they're contracted in, correct?
A lot of it is, not all of it.
Not all of it?
Some of them, some of those people are on staff.
Okay. So, the contracted in piece, um, whoever we have contracted in, um, do we go out and see who else is available? Any companies that are available with lesser rates? We do?
Do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so, um, I know Mr. George and Miss Sylvia, um, at the business office, they're in contact with their county counterparts and comparing rates of whatever one's paying the contractors. I keep in contact with the directors around the county as well. Um, if you look at the, the contractors, so we have contractors that are independent contractors. They're, you know, self-employed and then we also contract through the agencies. If you compare those costs, the independent contractors are, um, much cheaper than what the agencies cost. So, they're also ingrained within our buildings. They're part of our community. They know our kids. They're, they're great with our kids. Um, the, the agencies, you never know what you're gonna get and they're more expensive. So, retaining those, those contractors year after year is key. I can tell you, since I've been here and, and most of these people, um, that we contract with were here prior to me starting, since I've been here, there's probably two people on this list that their hourly rates increased and it was less than two dollars an hour. So, that those rates stay pretty much the same every year. Um, we do get requests all the time from our contractors to increase rates. Um, and, you know, like, there is a concern that eventually they're going to start looking elsewhere where they can, they can make more money. So, it's kind of a, you know, that fine line of being physically responsible, but also keeping the high-quality people that we do have, you know, working with us right now.
Okay. Okay, that's it?
Good.
Right now? Sure.
All right.
I have no comments. Thank you. I'm good. I've been looking at this budget for months. I'm good, believe me.
Oh, I know. I know. I know.
I know we have a finance meeting Monday night and we'll be looking at it again.
I know. Mr. Scanlon?
Well, as a member of the Finance Committee, it's, uh, my, my goal with this was to hear the rest of the board and the public have some input and be able to, to listen. And, um, that's what, you know, that's, that's my goal tonight, is to do the listening, to see what feelings there are. Of course, we don't have a lot of people here, so we're not gonna get a lot of different opinions. And, uh, but the, uh, one question, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Doctor, uh, but, uh, with some of the changes in administration, there were some savings also, weren't there? Were there some?
There were.
Could you just give a, a brief rundown of like where we might've saved money or reduced? I, I thought there was a minute, no?
Uh, well, not because I don't, I don't have it right in front of me.
Oh, okay. But-
And because it was a lot of movement and retirement.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I know. Right.
So, I guess the one that comes to mind is, one of our administrators is retiring.
Right.
And then the one that's replacing her in a different role is coming in at a reduced salary. So, there's that differential.
Well, then let me, let me rephrase it. Some of the moves that were made are cost-saving.
Yes. Not all of them, but some of them.
And I, I, it was just something that came to mind that, you know, that, yeah, are there places where we've worked to save money? That's one of, and, and there's also some retirements that aren't being-
There are some retirements, so they're, uh, being absorbed through attrition. And then when we, we know that Mr. De George is, uh, also, uh, retiring, when we replace him, there'll be some cost savings.
Right, yeah. So, so, but in other words, we are working to-
Yes.
Yeah. On the, on the cost end, we've been frugal where we can be.
Yes.
That's, I just wanted to bring that out a little bit. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it's a good point. No, you didn't put me on the spot. It's all good.
That's it. I'd like to get that out there. That's all. Just so people know that we work on it.
All good? You okay?
Okay, yeah.
All right. Very good. Okay, um, so, for our public here and out in TV land, um, being on the Finance Committee myself, um, it's been exhausting. And I wanna thank Mr. De George, Sylvia, uh, Dr. Pereira, Mr. Zelinski and the other board members working tirelessly on this, on this budget. Unfortunately, you know, what, what people may not understand is we did get a huge loss this year of three-point-something million. Um, and that's in part because during COVID, if I'm not mistaken, the state gave us some money back that they took away from us and then all of a sudden, they took it back again and then we got hit with one-point-something million. So, it, it, it kinda double-whammied us. Um, the budget that we're going to approve on the fourteenth, um, is the preliminary budget. So, we can't make any changes to this preliminary budget, um, until after the fourteenth. But we are still looking at it. We're going through it with a fine-tooth comb. Education is the key, paramount. Um, there are other departments that we're still looking to make cuts in. And athletics is not off the board. So, we are looking at every department within the district. So, um, there's things we can do and things we can't do. I mean, we're, you know, we're looking at maybe losing our class three officers. We're, we're, you know, that, that might be something that's, that's reality that we're gonna have, that's a hundred and something thousand dollars and we have to get rid of them. So, we're not happy about that, but in, in order to keep, you know, education paramount, we have to make changes like that. Um, so with that being said, you know, I, I thank you all for your comments. Um, I have nothing else, um, at this time. Nothing? Great. Good. Okay. So, um, I'm just going to, oh, wait a minute. Isn't today National Parade Day?
It is.
I wanna congratulate and thank our parish for their tireless, endless work and with our students and staff and everything. And happy Parade Day. Um, and with that, I would like to get into German.
Make a motion.
Motion second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're out. Thank you.